All right, test, tests. Can somebody on Zoom give us a thumbs up or a a woot, woot? All right, thanks. Thanks, David. Is that David's thumb? Yeah, thanks, David.
Dunsborough City Council into order. Everyone will please stand for the flag. All right, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Lucchese.
Here.
Councilmember Brian. Vice Mayor Sebring.
Present.
Mayor Clarno.
Here.
And we have Councilmember Hubbard as an excused absence.
Correct.
Excellent.
All right. Next, we'll move on to item number three, special presentation and announcements. We have one on the agenda today. The proclamation against child abuse. And then after we do that, a representative from the Union Pacific is here. And we'll have a second one. We'll have her go after the proclamation against child abuse.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. And coming up in April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it is also so used to that. It's also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we, April 5th to 11th is Week of the Young Child. And so I'm just here to let everybody know that we have lots of activities planned at First 5 Siskiyou and throughout the county. And this year, this year, what we're doing differently is that we're choosing, or the community is choosing Champions for Children, so you can nominate somebody that you feel has committed their lives to helping children. I've nominated two Dunsborough people, and one of them is Will Newman. And then Sue, she's in Rotary. What's her last name? Sue? Susan Killer? Yeah. Yeah, so she was a 40-year teacher, and then she's been volunteering her time. So if you see on the flyer there, you can find the link to the survey and just enter the name, and you can enter why you think that they deserve to have this role. So I think that that's kind of fun. And so if you would like, would you like to read the proclamation, or would you like me to?
Um, I can read it.
Okay, great.
Right, April 2025, the Siskiyou Child Abuse Prevention Council Collaborative Proclamation. Whereas to become healthy adults, all children deserve to live in safe, stable, and nurturing homes and communities. Whereas children are vital to Siskiyou County's prosperity and future success. Whereas the people of Siskiyou County believe in the celebration of life, inclusion, and hope through our children, and deplore and condemn acts of violence committed upon the children of our communities. Whereas the lives of children who have been hurt or lost to child abuse are honored by studying their stories in order to prevent future abuse and protect the innocence, health, and life of all of our county's children. Whereas child abuse, rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our society. Whereas child abuse, neglect, and sexual assault prevention is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future generations. Whereas research has shown the enormous impact that positive parenting practices have on a child's social, emotional, and intellectual development and future success. Whereas communities that understand the importance of prevention and support for the well-being of citizens thrive and prosper. Whereas effective child abuse and sexual assault prevention succeed because of partnerships among citizens and all sectors of the county. Whereas April is the month to focus public attention on the needs of all children and prevention of sexual assault. Whereas the leadership dedication and encouragement. Whereas with leadership dedication and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing child abuse and sexual violence in Siskiyou County. Therefore, we hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention and Sexual Assault Awareness Month, as well as April 5th through 11th, 2025, as Week of the Young Child. We call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening families in the communities in which we live.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Is there any, if there's anybody in the community that wants to put a yard sign up, or who wants to do a pinwheel garden, please get in touch with us, or you can let me know here tonight. And I just wanted to say that the playgroups for First 5 are on Wednesdays from 10:00 to 11:30. So that's for the children. And then since there's not a lot of music in the schools, I just wanted to share that coming up on March 29th, that there's an event, I think it's 2:00 to 3:30 at the Jefferson Center for the Arts. And it's with Joe Craven and his daughter. And it's something for kids. And so there's a couple other music programs too that's sponsored by First 5. So I just wanted to help spread the word on that, and thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a representative from Union Pacific.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, it's good to see you again. Better circumstances hopefully next time I come up. Peggy Egghuhi, I'm the Senior Director for Union Pacific Railroad. Safety is our first priority, being the best and protecting one another and ensuring the well-being of our communities we serve is why we invest nearly $10 million every day in our infrastructure and deploying cutting-edge technology like wayside detectors and autonomous track inspections to keep our networks secure. At about 9:30 PM Central Time on March 15th, approximately seven Union Pacific railcars derailed upright near Simpson Road in Dunsborough. There were no injuries and no hazmat releases, and the cause of the derailment is still under investigation. This has been the only derailment that we've had since the last one in 2022. That's been documented in the city of Dunsborough proper. Union Pacific's Response Management Communication Center, which we refer to as RMCC, is responsible for coordinating critical incident response notifications to customers and external first responder entities. Our Response Management Communication Center identifies the Public Safety Answering Centers, or what we call 911, through our membership in the National Emergency Number Association, NENA, or N E N A. The 911 Association, California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, as well as the California Public Utility Commission, were all notified at the time of the derailment, within a few minutes of us realizing that we had derailed upright seven lumber cars. For the city of Dunsborough specifically, Siskiyou County is the incident response entity that is notified by our Response Management Incident Response Management Communication Center. Siskiyou County is responsible for cascading information down to the local governments within their jurisdiction as needed. Like I said before, we do use innovation and technology. We're, you know, continue to improve that every day and improve our processes. I also get notification of derailments in the cities we operate. The reason I get notification is so I can outreach when I know there's been a public impact or public, you know, issue along those lines. Simpson Road was closed for almost a day. That information did not get to me, so we are working on how to make sure I get that information so that I can make those requisite phone calls myself, independent of our formal 911 process that I outlined earlier. Happy to take any questions, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you so much, Peggy, for coming. And I do wish we were under better circumstances. And I wanted to just ask if you are familiar with the Cantara Loop spill of 1991?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, so our town has a very sensitive relationship with derailments in general. So please understand, when we don't hear anything, our citizens assume the very, very worst, because we've experienced the very, very worst. And it's hard to forget that. With that in mind, I just wanted to ask if you guys have your own dispatch internally that would get it first? And kind of, what is your role in receiving that information? Did you find out within minutes?
Yes, I receive an email. So our Response Management Communication Center is a 24/7 operated staff of personnel that receives information from the train dispatcher in this instance of a derailment, and they make those requisite first responder notifications.
Okay, well, if it's possible, and your predecessor promised me this after a derailment in Cantara in 2021, didn't live up to the promise when a derailment occurred the next year at the same location, that you notify the city of Dunsborough when any derailment takes place, just so we can help educate the citizens on what's going on. I understand you guys have your own risk management, et cetera, but it's life or death for us. If another incident like Cantara happens, it could set our city back. If it doesn't kill half of us, you know, another 30 years when it comes to the beautiful natural environment we enjoy here. The economic impact alone of that spill has not been something we've overcome. You know, we were a fly fishing destination unparalleled for 100 years until that point. Certainly, we've recovered, but not fully. And that's just the economic side. So is it possible to get a commitment from Union Pacific for us to know of any derailment in our jurisdiction? Or at the very minimum, up to Cantara Loop as well? Because upriver from us would have an immediate impact as well.
Right, I mean, what I can commit to is doing my best and outreach when I get a notification that it's in the city of Dunsborough.
Could we get on the notification list?
Yeah, and we're working, I'm sorry.
No, no, we're sorry. If it's not possible, let us know, but.
We're working with Siskiyou County to make sure that their ladder of notifications also maybe can become more robust so that when they get notification of a derailment, they offer a contact statement in the city of Dunsborough.
That's wonderful, but is there any objection on UP's side to just including us in the notification?
Through the RMCC formal process, we operate through 7,300 communities. So we use the N E N A, the National Emergency. I forgot what it stands for.
I'm not an expert in these matters, so.
So that's what we utilize. And like I said, we're going to be working with Siskiyou County to, you know, figure out a better way to make sure that folks get notified that want to be notified.
Not folks so much in the sense that, you know, we have people who can do our own investigations for history. We don't trust everything that we hear. For instance, the number of cars was misstated three times in the 2021 derailment. So our citizens would like, as best as we're able to, we to verify, you know, what the situation is, particularly when hazardous materials are involved, as they were, we were told later on in the 2021 derailment. No negative impacts, thankfully. You know, we're all grateful for that. So essentially, you're saying it is not possible for Union Pacific to notify us directly when there's a derailment in our jurisdiction at the same timeframe when you and Siskiyou County are notified? Like, we want to be in that first tier of notification.
Yeah, that's not part of the protocol today. So again, we rely on the protocol that we use across 23 states and 7,300 communities.
So there's no flexibility to field our requests and maybe run it up the ladder, see if that's something that we could do to increase our comfort?
Yeah, I can certainly have more conversations with our Response Management Communication Center.
Maybe I can put it a different way. How many jurisdictions in the 700 and something, 723 jurisdictions you go through have had a derailment that destroyed the town 30 years ago? I hope it's one, but it can't be too many.
Yeah, I'm not really aware of any other ones than Cantara Loop.
And you weren't here then. You weren't even the one who didn't communicate with us back in '21 and '22. I certainly hope we can get to a better place when it comes to the transparency here. We've been interacting a lot more because of the cleanup. So it would be a perfect time to iron out the distrust we have surrounding derailments. Because every time we're promised, we'll tell you next time, we probably should have, I'm on my third.
Right.
And each time, there was a commitment to do things differently. And I think this might have been up there with the least communicative on that front. So thankfully, we do have locals who work for the railroad and people who couldn't get to and from their homes. I wanted to maybe bring up that. Has Union Pacific reached out to any of those residents that were impacted and offered any sort of services? I happen to know of some elderly people that do live up there. I do believe they're fine. But was that a concern in the emergency response conducted by UP?
We did not make contact with the residents up there. Again, I was unaware the road was closed, but we did work to restore the road and get it open as quickly as possible. It's not in a great state today. I did go out there, and it's missing crossing pads. It still needs some significant work, and we're going to be out there working, doing a bunch of that during the week of April 1st through the 4th, I believe, is what the current plan is. But I am committed to letting the city know all those updates.
Could we get maybe a, I don't know, I mean, a firmer commitment? Something maybe in writing? Because we've been here before, and I do trust you. So if it's something we're going to improve upon, I'd love to just have a standard procedure for Dunsborough, even if it's between you while you're in this position, and I hope you're here for a long time, because we've been off to a good start again with the cleanup down there. But it's a very sensitive issue for us. We have every right to be suspicious when we were devastated 30 years ago. And three times in the last six years, we were flagrantly, you know, ignored when it impacted our citizens or had the potential to. And sometimes it's really simple. It's lumber. It's not hazardous material. Some affirmative statement to that effect would be amazing to make people calm down.
Understood.
Thank you.
And I take full responsibility for folks that stood here before and gave you that commitment, and I apologize for that.
Yeah, my other question was regarding derailments. I understand some can't happen, or sorry, some can't be avoided. There's things that happen, many, many hundreds of miles of track, if not thousands. But length of train's been kind of something I've been looking into since the very first derailment. Do you know how long the train was that derailed, by chance?
I know it was just under 7,000 feet.
7,000 feet?
Yes.
Do you know what the average length of trains are that you guys run?
I think system-wide, it's around 9,400, but I can provide that information back to you.
Do we have particular metrics or specifications for our canyons? You know, I mean, Cantara is a bit of an issue for length of train.
Every territory is managed as its own characteristics based on the terrain and territory, so definitely.
You guys have the best engineers.
And all the trains are made up specifically to account for what the train contains and where to put the train. We use a lot of technology to, you know, do all those calculations. We have this physics train builder that actually builds the train designed to go over the territories that it's pointed to traverse. So all of that is calculated before the train departs.
Which is harder to, and I'm sure that's greatly reduced the number of derailments. And we probably, if we looked over the history of the railroad, I'm sure there's fewer. But with the longer train issue, you know, there has been a historical trend for longer and longer trains, as I understand it, although I'm not an expert by any means. I'd love to know what the specifications call for with length and weight through Dunsborough and Cantara, kind of through our territory. Would you be able to maybe provide that so we could have some context for it?
Yeah, let me see what I can get you. I mean, I know they're in our, like, timetables and all those instructions.
If you could help navigate that, I'm not an expert in that. But we'd like to know that so we can kind of understand if it is an accident, we'll be a lot less disturbed maybe that Union Pacific didn't look after it than if it's a policy. Because, you know, three in Dunsborough in six years is not a good success rate from our standpoint. Granted, none of them led to any devastation. So, you know, thankful for that. And not to be too hard on you, I mean, this is just very sensitive for us. Could you go over what sort of hazards?
Through the chair, this is an item that was not agendized, and it was a special presentation. So I would suggest that maybe the council member can share his questions with Peggy, and we could agendize this as an item for a future agenda.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll see that. Especially you said April 1st through the 3rd was when you're hoping to have most of the ditch repair work done, and a lot of the cleanup done by, correct?
The crossing work is scheduled to be done that week.
Maybe let's try to do, get that on the agenda, the first meeting after that, and then we can.
Our meeting, the first meeting in April would be the 3rd, I believe, is that Thursday. Would you be able to provide us with some information, maybe come back to an item related to that? I will certainly try. Okay, thank you.
And if not, if you're unavailable, maybe we could do it at the following meeting after that. You're available for.
And to add to the council, we have had a meeting this afternoon with emergency management folks and all parties involved from the city and county with Union Pacific. And we plan on meeting again that same week. So just, we may not get that meeting scheduled so we could give a full update prior to that. But we are, as staff, working on that as well. So I just want to make you guys aware of that.
If I may suggest, I think the council may be open to a special meeting, and maybe we can take a poll if you would like to have the meeting sooner than the second regular meeting.
I would just like to better communicate, have better information from UP so that we can educate our constituents. We don't expect you to go door-to-door in Dunsborough, but we are people that live here, are part of the community. If we have accurate, timely information about the way you operate and how it affects us, we'll be able to better convey that accurate information to our citizens. And if there is a real threat, obviously, we're going to be concerned. If there isn't a real threat, we deserve to know that so we can relax. So I appreciate it.
Understood.
Thank you so much for coming here in person. It does mean a lot to us.
Yeah, I appreciate you giving me the time.
And then I do request, I don't know what your plan is, to stick around until at least after public comment, which is the next item, just that way. Members of the public have any questions, I might let you answer them. So preferably after they're done with their public comment. So.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we will move into public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to address the city council on matters of city business. If you do have something to say on an item on the agenda, specifically under item number 10 or 11, old business and new business, I do request that you hold your comment until that time, as those items will have dedicated dedicated public comment. However, the consent agenda does not. So if you do have something to say on the check register, you are more than welcome to. Everyone will have three minutes. I will give a 30-second warning when your time is almost up. Please, or we'll start with people in the room first and then go to Zoom. If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. And with that, we will open this to public comment. Open the meeting to public comment.
Hi there, I'm Andrea Herr, 4740 Simpson Avenue. So this is a time to talk about the train issues, right? Okay, I'd like to talk about communication and safety. And I do appreciate that you said that you did not contact the people in Simpson. So in the future, if people can be in the neighbors, and especially on a road that is cut off not a through road, we need to hear, you know, about it. I heard about it from Michael. And then I do appreciate there were a couple of notices that the city put out, one informational, and then an update. I appreciate that. But, you know, it's so critical. We have older, a number of older citizens. And so, for example, I was told by Dennis today that there's going to be a day when the when the road will be closed, you know, for the repair. And so, especially if we can know about that. And I think you almost, you know, I don't know that people will go out. And not everybody goes out every day. So if you can, I mean, a sign would be good on the road. But you almost need to put something on people's doors in Simpson, just because it is a, you know, you can't get out. And there probably should be some plan for, you know, what if there was a fire? What if somebody did have to have an ambulance come in? You know, we should know kind of what that plan would be. So I guess the safety side of it is, I would like to, I really appreciate Matthew's comments and concerns. I know there's only so much you can do, but I appreciate that you will, I'm sure you'll do everything you can to pass safety concerns up the line. But I think as a community, I think that we need, and I will try to take part in this. I think we need to be advocates for our community and for the citizens, for our town, and for the river. And because, you know, even though I'm sure that the railroad is, you know, they have to consider productivity, they have to consider profits, and they have to consider safety. And on the news, too often, we hear we do hear that the railroad is resisting oftentimes, you know, shorter trains, fewer cars, more staff. And I think they just need to know, I mean, one, derailment is too much. When every train, almost every train, carries toxic materials for the river and oftentimes for people. Two, I understand that there was one by Hotlum. In other words, one is too many.
Thank you.
So I just wonder if, I know you're on the other side of that train, and so you would get stuck. So wouldn't it make, would it make sense to have somebody on the side where they get stuck on that road to have somebody designated to put up signs on people's doors or to people? You know, where, because you can't get over the, you can't cross. And so it'd have to be somebody living in that area, just as an idea. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kevin Tinsky. I live at 5945 Dunsborough Avenue. Work at the hardware store here and my library patron, and I wanted to talk to you about the library. I'm on the board of the Friends of the Dunsborough Library. There's a few other members here. You guys all know me. So I guess I'm just saying this for the benefit of anyone who doesn't. Friends of the Dunsborough Libraries, our main mission is engaging with the community, trying to get people to come into the library and also help pay the bills. Now, the city of Dunsborough is the number-one source of funding for the library. And not to go into all the particulars, but you guys know how the funding works. It's a grant. We come out a few times a year with our hands out. And you guys keep, help us keep the building open. And it's been great working with you. There's been some ups and downs, but it's, the library's open. The town has a library. And if anybody knows the history of how close we came to losing it, you know, we're really lucky. So first of all, all gratitude to the city council. You guys have been working real hard to keep it going. But my friend Tim here has the specifics, but we're looking at a pretty big deficit for fiscal year 2025. And our future funding is uncertain. And so we were, we just wanted to talk to you guys about it and see if maybe one of our number can meet with the finance committee and maybe discuss possible path forward for the funding of the library. You know, maybe we'd like to see us become a, you know, just a permanent line item on the budget. But, you know, whatever it is, we're going to have to get creative before we get desperate coming into it. And we've been, we've been doing our part as much as we can. We were holding a couple coming into it. And we've been, we've been doing our part as much as we can. We were holding a couple of events a year. In fact, May 10th, the second Saturday of May, we're having an open house and it'll be a great big old party in the library. So everybody come out and can win some raffle prizes. It'll be live music and speakers. So we're, we're trying a few events like that a year. We have grants that we're, you know, we're applying for and writing for and we're always always trying to figure it out. But the fact remains is the city of Dunsmere and the taxpayers of Dunsmere are the reason why we still have a library. And so we just wanted to kind of let you guys know where, where we're at. We're, we're looking at a pretty big deficit next year. And so we're, yeah, we just, we'd like to get in a, in a room with you guys, sit down and maybe talk about some, some strategies for next year. And so that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
We want to just remind them of the reactions.
If you do want to make a comment on Zoom, go to the reaction tab and raise your hand. And.
David has a comment. He's got a hand.
David does. Oh, it's plenty with the background. All right, David.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So I know Peggy has, has to deal with her employer at corporate level. And I remember when I was in law school at Davis in the 70, early 70s, the town would get divided in half by Southern Pacific trains. And the result was that ambulances and fire trucks couldn't get across the tracks to serve half the town. But eventually in Overpass was built and they fixed that problem with cooperation with the state. But coming back to Dunsmere. One of the things I would like to suggest, maybe Peggy would, could take this into consideration along with the Dustin is the idea that if we had a something that blocked every crossing of the tracks in town, that maybe there could be some kind of plan to keep something open, at least for fire safety issues. Maybe that could be addressed. I want to say thank you to Matthew for bringing this up. Thank you to Dustin for sending out something on Facebook where we could find out about it, although it wasn't like right away, but that was really terrific. So fire safety, maybe there could be, maybe Peggy could have something that she just does on her own to make sure to let our city manager know immediately about these things. And then he could communicate with the rest of the city. Or alternatively, there could be a phone number where citizens could call in to actually reach somebody for emergencies and report to something like that. So those are just my reactive thoughts to what was said today. But I really appreciate Matthew again for raising these questions of serious concern to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will close public comment for this evening. Great. And with that, we'll move on to council and staff comments and we'll start with Sergeant Ortiz.
Got hold of it.
The sheriff's office doesn't have much to report this month. We've been talking at length of the recent railroad derailment. There has been a rumor circulating town that the lumber is free for the taking. I'm here to tell you, it is in fact not. That is still very much private property. That is the, the contract workers, whomever is telling you that it's okay to take the lumber, they are lying. I spoke with the railroad this morning. They're going to be doing some signage tomorrow to make that more clear to people, but please don't land yourself in jail over some two by fours. That's all we have.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Hope so. Slide it up all the way. There now try it.
So nice to meet everybody. I'm with you, the planning group. I'm a certified planner through the American Institute of Certified Planners. And I, since I started, it was, I think it was back in December, I come and met with city departments, including Public Works, code compliance, city administration and, and some other folks, front office folks as well. Just hearing what's going on with the city, what would help with some of the processes at the front counter and that kind of thing. So, so I thought I'd just give you kind of a debrief on that, driven around town, see what's going on as well. The first item that I'm working on right now, the most urgent item is actually the annual progress report for the housing element. We're playing a little bit of catch up with some of the programs and policies in the housing element that, you know, maybe should have started, been implemented, been implemented last year. So been working on that for the last month or so, and I should have something for you next month, by the end of the month. And I can give you more information obviously on that at that time. In looking forward into the future, we're also going to need to make some zoning code updates over the next year or so. In part because of the housing element, just to bring the zoning code into consistency with the housing element programs. And we're also in discussions right now, just with, I'm in discussions with staff and city administration about doing some other zoning code updates as well. And so that will, we're, we're in discussions. So I'll bring that back to you next time I have a progress report when I have some more information on it. We're also looking forward to in the summer of this year, doing a workshop to implement some of the housing element programs that really need to be implemented this year so that we can report on them positively next year to the state housing and community development agency. We're just going to try to hit all of them at once in one workshop. We're supposed to be doing it biannually per the housing element, but going to try to not do that since we don't really have a need, I don't think. And we don't really have the resources to do that. Unless that becomes an issue. So those are, I think, the major things I'm working on right now. And also in planning something that we're, that is a little bit on the back burner is we've got several annexations that are wanting to happen and we apparently cannot do annexations until we have a tax sharing agreement with the county. I know LAFCO is, is working on that right now. So more to come on that.
Thank you very much. City Manager Reese.
All right, Mayor Council.
Thank you for coming today.
Mayor and Council, so I guess I could sum up the majority of the, since Saturday, I've dealt with railroad stuff. So and other than that, Public Works guys are, you know, snow removal last week went well. Hopefully we don't have to do that again this season, but we're getting close to the end of the season. And so we're starting to move out and do other projects and we're, be finishing up water line related stuff in the park next week and getting that chlorinated and so being prepared to be brought online. And then other discussions just surrounding parks and parks management that I've been working through with the mayor and myself and Park and Rec District. So that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Brian.
I just want to thank Jessica for being here. It's great to see you in person. I enjoyed talking on the phone with you a couple of weeks back. And really looking forward to getting some of the zoning updates. I know that's something we've wanted to do. I just wanted to remind us that we had that ordinance review committee that kind of hasn't really had its own, partly because a lot of the things the committee might want to do, we didn't have the resources to do correctly in the planning world, if we could potentially integrate that effort with the zoning update. However, staff and council determine, but I'm looking forward to that effort. Thank you.
Councilmember Lucie.
I, the brief update that I have is, I just worked on the utility assistance program proposal and got that to Dustin for a first review. The plan is to bring kind of the concept back to city council to kind of discuss some items. But there will need to be a lot of involvement of the finance committee with it, making some decisions and recommendations on the funding related to that program. So hopefully bringing that to the city council either probably two meetings from now. Hopefully, but you know, that's no rush, but just worked on that. And the only question I have is, are you thinking about doing a kind of an open item in addition to the APR to kind of discuss the zoning changes? Because I know that at least I think Councilmember Brian and Mayor Clarno and I were here for the comprehensive update. And I think there were some pieces that we had requested a couple of times into the zoning code that did not get into the zoning code. And so I don't want you to have to start from scratch. So I was wondering if you were going to have that as just like an open discussion item. So maybe we could bring back some of those requests that we had previously had that did not get included.
Yeah, so there will need to be some zoning code updates for the housing element. Are you speaking about some other updates not having to do with the housing element?
It was kind of sort of part of the housing. Well, it was, it was framed to us as part of the housing element. And then it turned into, well, we can't do it. You have to do land use, which we kind of knew, we had to do land use hand in hand with the zoning code. And so it just, it ended up getting pushed off. And so I think there are a couple of items that I know Councilmember Brian had quite a few as well, just asking questions about adding certain pieces, specifically the R1 zoning did not get changed significantly. And so I think we have like some notes on that already. So what would be the most appropriate way to share those notes with you in a, in a public enough way of transparent way?
Yeah, for sure. So, okay, so next month, when I come back, we'll just, there will be a couple of policies that I'll be asking you to adopt most likely that are in the housing element. As far as the zoning code updates, that is a work in progress that will be happening over the next year. So our timeline for that is not till, to adopt that till March or April of 2026. During that time, I envision a robust public engagement process, including the planning commission, with city council, with the public, with the historic delegates and all that. So we definitely will come back. In terms of what you want to see in that, I'm happy to do a separate item for that or an open item.
No, I think, I think you answered my question. Is that there, there'll be, there's time.
There will be lots of opportunities. Yeah.
Thank you. You answered. You're good. Thank you. I have no other questions or comments.
Where's Mayor Sebring?
I have no comments for this one.
And I also don't have anything today. So with that, we will move on to committee reports.
Yep, I don't think, not since last meeting.
No, we had finance right before the last meeting. Do we have a finance committee meeting on Monday or are there, oh no, no.
No. We won't have a quorum, but we'll be having two, at least two in April.
Yep. Okay. So that will move on to item number seven, approval of minutes. We have two sets of needed minutes to approve today. February 20th, we'll do first. So item number A, minutes from February 20th, 2025. And I believe there was a correction that needed to be made on this.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was mine. And it was just that it was, there was no clarification to the motion and I think it has been put in here and clarified. But I can see that they're all here.
I think it was toward the end.
Yeah, I think it, it was the city attorney RFP for publication. So yeah, it is in there now. That has been flushed out. I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 20th, 2025.
Second that. All those in favor?
I. I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes for the March 6, 2025 city council meeting.
Second.
All of them in favor?
I.
Both sets of minutes approved. And with that, we'll move on to item number eight, the consent agenda, which consists of one item today, check register for March 1st through March 14th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I had one brief question, maybe if you could just deal with it real quick. Check number 10616 rental guys, snow blower, 84 inch. That seems like, is that a winter rental or is that, that can't be monthly?
Oh, that was a total for the winter.
Okay. Is that, that's something, well, I guess.
What number was it?
Check number 10616.
That's vendor number. Check number 59955.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
With that amount, let's just look into whether we could buy one. Sorry.
It is possible that there's other stuff online at voice. That's just the description. It might just be the.
Yeah, that was probably the top level.
We'll get you the details there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brian.
Oh, I believe there probably would have been something on rental guys associated with, we rented the lift that they're currently using.
Okay, which we could not afford to buy.
Right.
Well.
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
I.
I. Agenda approved. Before we move into old and new business, I am going to just give us a quick ten minute recess. So we will meet back here at 6:56. Agenda approved. Before we move into old and new business, I am going to just give us a quick 10 minute recess. So we will meet back here at 6:56.
So since then, there's been some public, public concern about it not running. And so from the standpoint of, of staff and the number of things that we need to comply with and regulations and all of the different areas. I kind of outlined what I believe are most of those, including what is our current compliance order requirements for the water system? Cowfish and wildlife requirements, Corps, Army Corps of Engineer requirements. Our water rights authorization and how it impacts that. Regulatory reporting of water usage slash loss. And then drought requirements and restrictions to flow. And then additionally, at the bottom, I didn't bullet point it, but legal liability of flowing water down the drainage. And I need, you know, some legal advice on how we handle that and what city's potential exposure is if we are when we, if we do run water, what does that mean and how does that work? And then additionally justification to the other rate pairs and the additional inspect expenses incurred and how to mitigate slash cover these costs. So I know that's a lot, but that's a, that doesn't include even getting into, I know we discussed previously about doing an inspection of the whole system that we can't see physically without going underground. And that is something that we will be doing and scheduling in the off season, in the dry season. So most likely will happen in August or September, I believe. At a point when there's no longer natural creek drainage going through there now, as there is today. And so that's kind of the update. I guess the concerns, the, we're, we're in process, but it's a lot.